Recording in progress.
Good evening, I call tonight's meeting to order. Lady Clark, roll call please.
Councilmember Belzak.
Here.
Councilmember Gilchrist.
Here.
Councilmember Hudson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Veda Kaboli.
Here.
And Mayor Branson.
Can I get everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. Before we move on with the meeting, I want to read a brief statement that the mayor left with us. To excuse my absence from civic duty, as Dean's mother, brother, and I deal with the most painful chapter in our lives. Blessings to all, Chris. Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There was an update provided at the dais for every position on item number eight. It was the mid-year budget and it was an updated letter, figures only in a chart.
Would you say that one more time? The request was?
The amendment was for the mid-year budget. It was just a chart within the document. The numbers within the document are absolutely correct.
Oh, okay, great. All right, thank you. Close session reports, Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Vice Mayor, there is nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. I will start with the presentations and it looks like Chief, you're the first one up.
If I could please get Officer Kenny Combs and Osmar Redarte up front, please. All right, please raise your right hand. Do you please state your name? Do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of California, against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the United States of America, and that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter.
So just real quick to enter, first of all, thank you everybody for showing up this evening to support the City Council along with supporting us with our new officers, our promotions, and our retirement this evening. First of all, Officer Osmar Redarte, hi, yes. Right, just to give you a little bit of a history about Osmar. He was born in Guadalajara, Mexico, and when he was 10 years old, his father, Efren, moved the United States and relocated to North Sacramento. That's where he grew up. In 2016, he graduated from Rio into high school and shortly after enlisted into the US Army as an engineer. He had the opportunity to serve our country for four years of Texas. When his army contract ended, he returned to the state of California with his wife and his two children. He had saved up and attended the, oh, sorry. He attended, he saved up and attended the Sacramento Police Academy where he graduated June of 2022. And then he applied with the Marysville Police Department and was successful, and that's why he's here today. And he started with us on January 19th, 2023. And just a few minutes, we'll have his father Efren and his wife Monica join us up front to pin his badge. Our second newest officer is Officer Kenneth Combs. He was born and raised in Reno, Nevada, graduated from North Valley High School. In 2011, he married his wife Cassandra. They have three beautiful little daughters, had the opportunity to meet. And he started with the Orville Police Department as a municipal law enforcement officer and was attending the Uba College Academy when I showed up and pulled him out of that academy and we recruited him to go to the full-time Police Academy of View Community College. He is the first successful graduate that we've had from the academy sponsoring through, which is pretty awesome and exciting for us. And he started full-time after his graduation. He started full-time with us on December 12th of 2022. So we're excited to have them both here. His brother, Robert Sasek from Orville PD is here to pin his badge as well. So if I can get the three of them up here and we can get the badge pending underway. All right, thank you guys. And, you know, we're super excited to have you guys here. We've gotten the chance to work with you guys a little bit so far and we're excited for the years to come and the experience and the dedication that you're going to provide to the city of Marysville. And congratulations and good luck on all your endeavors as you move forward with this.
Okay, next, we. Chief, it's you again with a retirement proclamation?
We still have one more for a promotion for swearing in.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
We have one more. Can I get Sergeant Ryan Souza up here? Newly promoted Sergeant Ryan Souza?
Do you, Ryan Souza, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the United States of America, and that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter? Congratulations, Sergeant.
I know a lot about this kid and and I told him to send me a bunch of information and I, it's like, it was like a scroll. It went like all the way down to the floor, so I had to shorten it up here a little bit for the sake of being, you know, concise here. Where do I start? Ryan Souza, grew up in Sacramento, graduated Oakmont High School in 2010, attended Sierra College, obtained his associates in criminal justice and went to the police academy. He started with us as a reserve officer in 2015. He was a full-time officer starting in 2017. Ryan's done it all with us, field training officer, firearms instructor, baton instructor. He's on the regional SWAT team. He's on the officer involved shooting team. He just got out of an assignment and detectives came straight to patrol and we promoted him. His wife Jacqueline is here present with him and has been by his side since day one as part of our family as well. Their eight-year-old daughter Olivia, right back there with those cute little curls. And their newest is eight-month-old Cole. Back, oh, there he is, back there waving in the corner. Ryan likes long walks on the, no, I'm sorry, that was the wrong one. He likes playing, he likes playing baseball, golf, and snowboarding. He coaches his daughter's softball team. I'm super proud to be up here and so is the rest of our command staff to be able to promote Ryan. This kid's got a lot of drive. He's got a lot of knowledge. I'm glad he's chosen to stay here and promote and take that experience that he's gained from here and bring it to the new people like, you know, Redarte and Combs and the rest of the new officers that are here instead of going somewhere else. So thank you for sharing that with us and just congratulations on your promotion. We look forward to the experience and the leadership that you're going to continue to provide our team, so.
We got anybody else? We got him sworn in. All right, Chris, you can. We have the retirement proclamation coming up and I'll leave that up to Chris again.
This one's going to be a hard one. Can I get Reserve Lieutenant Dan Quinones to join me up here? Should get my glasses for that print. Just for this one. This proclamation is on behalf, this proclamation is on behalf of the city of Marysville. Whereas we are here today to honor Daniel Quinones on his retirement, on his 30 years of distinguished and dedicated service to the law enforcement profession. And whereas Daniel Quinones started his career, law enforcement career as a reserve police officer in the city of Woodland from 1992 to 1996. And whereas Daniel Quinones was a full-time officer with the city of Woodland from 96 to 97. Bet you didn't think I knew all that, huh? And whereas in 97, Dan Quinones began his new career with the Chevron Corporation. However, he could not leave his passion for law enforcement. And whereas Dan Quinones returned to law enforcement as a reserve officer with the Marysville Police Department in 1998 and has been a valued member of the Marysville Police Family for the past 24 years and some change. And whereas Daniel Quinones rose to the reserve rank structure from officer, sergeant, and retiring as reserve lieutenant. And whereas reserve lieutenant Daniel Quinones brought a vast amount of experience and knowledge to the operations of the organization from patrol investigations, field training, background investigations, internal affairs investigations, and TASER instruction. He also had a short tenure as a school resource officer. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Christian Sacks, Chief of Police and from the City Council, the city of Marysville do hereby recognize and thank Reserve Lieutenant Dan Quinones for the 30 years of dedicated service to the profession and the community you serve.
That's not it. So. Glad you brought your wife. Because you're going to need it.
I think now we have some other presentations going along with you. Is that correct?
So I had my little speech prepared, but a lot of that just got read within that. But what I did want to highlight also within the years of service for Reserve Lieutenant Quinones is the fact that he also may have received many awards and accolades during his tenure with our department. He was Reserve Officer of the Year many, many times, countless times. We couldn't even find out how many times. We just know it was multiple times. He's received the Chief's Award, many other awards that you will see here this evening in a separate presentation. Along with, and this is the first and only one for our department, it was Reserve Officer of the Year from the US Senate. So Dan's definitely brought his game to our community. He lives outside of our community in Dixon. So he commuted all this way from Dixon, you know, to support the citizens of Marysville and the Marysville Police Department. On a personal note, Dan's been a mentor, a confidant, and just a true friend. I wouldn't be standing here today if it wasn't for Dan being that confidant, being that guy, being just the leader that he is and just being that person with the knowledge and that that person you can talk to and just get you through those days. So I came here in January of 2001. Dan was already here for three years, so he had a little bit on me, but him and I have, you know, my whole career here at Marysville PD has been with Dan and we've been there for each other through thick and thin and a lot of, a lot of good times and a lot of rough times. But I can tell you, I wouldn't have wanted to do it with anybody else for that long of a period of time. And I think it's the longest-standing relationship I have at this point, so don't break up with me, all right? Can I get, well, actually, can I get our Reserve Captain Dave Baker up here real quick? He's got something for you real quick and then we'll get going with a few more.
Thank you, Chief. Members of the council, thank you, folks. We're all here, as you know, to honor and recognize Dan Quinones, our Reserve Lieutenant. I also have been privileged, as have many of you in the department and in the community, to to know and be a part of Dan's experience here at Marysville. So I can't say enough and I'll keep it short because I too will probably get a little bit emotional about it. This is something that was put together by the Reserve Peace Officers Association of Marysville. It's presented to Lieutenant Dan Quinones in appreciation for more than 24 years of loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of the city of Marysville. We, the members of the Marysville Reserve Peace Officers Association, present this to you in recognition of your many years of sacrifice and service. We are your forever family.
Sorry, Dan, a little bit more. So on behalf of the Marysville Police Department and your family forever here, Reserve Lieutenant Dan Quinones for your combined 30 years of service to the field of law enforcement and your 25 years of dedicated service and leadership to the Marysville Police Department, 1992 to 2023. That's when I graduated high school. And. And Support Services Manager Kelly Minzer put together a shadow box for you commemorating, you know, just another token of our appreciation. It has his badge that we've retired. His lieutenant bars, his awards from his uniform. It was kind of hard getting all this stuff with him to surprise him with it, but you know, like, hey, turn in all your stuff and we're just taking all this stuff from him, so. Plus, his, the service stripes and those, those, each service stripe stands for four years. So it took up the whole shadow box. So congratulations, Dan. Can I get Laura Nicholson to join me up here? Oh, Ann Braden?
Good evening. On behalf of Assemblyman Gallagher and Senator Nilo, it really is an honor and a privilege to be here tonight to present to you this joint recognition from the California State Legislature, from the Assemblymen and the Senator, commending you, thanking you, congratulating you. It's got the information about your career, but there's so much more we know is involved in service to the community. And so we really do congratulate you and thank you on your service.
And can we get Mr. Morgan from Congressman Lamalfa's office?
Thank you. Lieutenant Dan Quinones, it has been, is with great honor and pleasure that I present to you this congressional recognition from Congressman Doug Lamalfa's office, recognizing your 30 years of public service in law enforcement, including your 24 years as a reserve officer with the Marysville Police Department. We thank you for all the time that you've served, making the great state, Northern California, better and working to represent our community. Thank you and we wish you all the best in your retirement. God bless you.
Okay, I think we can move along now. Next, we have a presentation for the Marysville Cemetery Commission. And it looks like Ms. Marla Pike, you are up.
So good evening. It's on, okay, good. So I'm not done with the microphone before, so we'll see how this goes. So thank you all for giving us the time to present at the meeting tonight. What we're looking at is an overview of our 21, 22 accomplishments.
Hold on one minute. Can we get the door closed? There we go. All right, now it's all yours.
Okay, so, better? Okay. So what we're looking at is the 21, 22 accomplishments as well as our 23, 24 objectives. So on the first slide, sorry, the next slide, Nicole, thank you. What we're looking at here is what we've done in the last couple of years. So we have ongoing cemetery maintenance. And what that means is that there's a group of volunteers that go out to the cemetery, the Historic Marysville Cemetery, every Monday morning and Thursday morning. And we work for four to five hours on, on maintenance at the cemetery. Our goals in being out there, of course, are to maintain the cemetery, keep the weeds down, keep things watered that need to be watered, as well as to provide a continuous presence at the cemetery so that we can look for any potential issues or problems at the cemetery. Examples of those are, that we've called out here are identifying fallen tree lamps that might have landed on headstones, for example, or just in the roadway that we need to have removed for safety purposes. We did find graffiti on a crypt that we reported to Public Works. As well as we're looking for any damaged fences or any water leaks at the well, which we have encountered as well. We are also the point of contact for descendants as they visit the cemetery. You know, hey, I'm looking for my aunt, Emma Jean. Where is she at? And we can, we can tell the descendants where their aunt is or where their uncle is. You know, whoever they're looking for, we can help them find their, their, their relative. We're also are ensuring that the existing plaques out there, the existing monuments out there are in a safe condition, that they're clean and that they're ready for the public to view. We also partner with the Friends for the Preservation of, Preservation of Uba County History. Fundraising for headstone repairs. That's the specific purposes behind our tours that we host at the cemetery. In our April 2022 Flowers, Tombstones, and Tales presentation or our tour, we had approximately 75 guests. At our October 2022 Tales of the Crypt, we had over 200 guests. We did not anticipate having over 200 guests, but we did it. On the next slide, continuing on the major accomplishments, we coordinated the repair of 12 damaged headstones with a monument company called Rucula Monument. They're out of Sacramento as well as Rockland and they are, they're artists at what they do. We had 10 headstones that were repaired by the Friends for the Preservation of Uba County History and two that were repaired by the city of Marysville's insurance company. Those two had already been once prepared by the group. And so the cost of the city on the insurance company was $1,000. And then for the Friends for the Preservation of Uba County History, the repair cost was $5,500. Sorry, I can't see up there. I can't see down here. One of the examples we have here is William Henry Sampson. What you'll see on the, on the left-hand picture is what his headstone looked like prior to the repair. As, and the other thing, the other smaller part of that headstone is, is actually his footstone. So when you go back out to the cemetery now, you'll see not only his repaired headstone, which you see on the right-hand side, but also his footstone. And I wasn't familiar with footstones before starting to volunteer at the cemetery, but they're, they're really interesting. On the next slide, to continue the summary, we coordinated the installation of Rose Arbers. We were given a donation from the Old City Sacramento, the Old City Cemetery Commission in Sacramento. And one of the, one of their, part of the funds where they were to be And one of the, one of their, part of the funds where they were to be targeted towards installation of two rose arbers. So we have those installed now. We also, um, worked with Vincenzo on development of, of, and of, um, ongoing maintenance and improvement program. We also have started again, um, performing more monthly cleanup day with the public. Prior to COVID, this was a, a great way for the high school students to get their volunteer hours or community service hours for their, for what they needed for their school. So we're, we've started that again. We also are maintaining a heritage rose garden. Um, these are heritage roses, roses that were donated to us out of, by a group that maintained the rose garden at the Sacramento City Cemetery. These are old, old roses that are no longer available for purchase. We also had the road sprayed for weed abatement, um, with an herbicide as well as a pre-emergent to help keep the weeds down on the roads. Yuba River Endowment made a one-time donation of $1,000 towards that road spraying. And then, um, the friends paid the difference of $800 so that $1,800 was paid, paid to Barrows Landscaping or Burrows Landscaping for the road spraying. One of the things we have a problem with out there are ground squirrels. So I did attend a webinar to find alternative ways, non-poisonous, to help us with the ground squirrel population. Unfortunately, most of what I learned isn't feasible for our site. But it was something that we did. We also coordinated, um, within our group with Liam Stout on his Eagle Scout Albox Project, which the council had a presentation on two, four and five months ago, from Liam. The other thing that we had was coordination with Salav for their May 28th, um, volunteer program out of the cemetery. And they started working on, on laying the, um, the chipping that we had on our roadways. Um, and then we did continue that work with the cemetery caretaker as well as other volunteers at the cemetery. Um, Salav did come out, I, I'm not sure of the date, but they did come out and finish that, um, finish that work about a month ago. Um, we also decorated for Memorial Day, and one of the other, um, great things that we're working on is the transcription of the cemetery burial and plot books. Um, that transcription has now been completed and, um, work is underway as far as proofreading that transcription so that we can get it posted, um, for people to view. Looking into 23, 24, our objectives are to, um, have more monument recreation, restoration and stabilization, provided by Rukula Monument Company. Uh, we do have 10 headstones already quoted by Rukula for their, um, for early 2023, and we're looking at, um, $5,500 for that. Initially, another 10 headstones, um, we're looking for to be completed again in 2024. We do want to host Memorial Day, um, Memorial Day services at the Grand Army of the Republic or the G A R, the Military Plot. Um, and that would be with, um, VFW Post 948, if I'm reading that right. And the other thing we wanted to look at is, um, cemetery road signage. The signage was installed many years ago, and it's either fallen off or it's no longer legible. Um, so this picture here, thank you Nicole for going back to it, um, just shows that they're, they're a little iffy as far as, um, being visible. Again, we want to look at continuing to perform the, um, Saturday monthly cleanup. Um, it's, it's great for the high school kids to come out and they get their community service hours as well as helps us catch up on, on some of the, the, the maintenance work that we can't keep up on, especially in the springtime. Um, I mentioned earlier that we're, that the transcription of the cemetery burial and plot books is complete, um, and, and is being proofread. So our goal is to have that posted to the City of Marysville website off of the Cemetery Commission page so that people can go out and look for that. Um, as well as continuing to maintain our heritage rose garden. I, um, planted two more, apologies, four more roses out there, and I have a fifth one at home to, to take out and plant. We also are looking into, um, grants for historical cemeteries, and that's something that, that, um, a couple of us have been looking into, so we'll continue to look into that to see, um, what kind of grants we can receive for the historical cemetery. What you're looking at here is, um, the annual maintenance and operations for the cemetery that we came up with. Total maintenance of $32,200. That's the caretaker abode, um, foliage, weeds, the porta potty, I'm sorry, the water pump, electrical, roads, fencing and lighting. And then under that, we have the, um, total operations of 14,76333, and that's the caretaker stipend as well as Public Works Department staff time for a total maintenance and operations budget of 46,96333. Council assistance. So what we're, what we have is we do have, um, some concrete or, and, or granite borders that are tilting. At some point, we're going to need to fix those before they actually, you know, cave all the way over. We did have one that had caved over. And when Salav was out on May 28th, they were able to get a group of people together with some steel poles and leverage that back into place. Uh, so that's been nice to have that one back in place. We also have some tilting monuments. In the picture, you'll see the, the one monument, you know, it's, it's, it's like the little Tower of Pisa up there. It's just kind of tilting a little bit. We do have several of those. Those are from, um, rodent damage. It's from, uh, just erosion, natural erosion. It's from flooding and then not flooding and, you know, it's just normal maintenance that goes on out there. So what we're looking for is, um, is council support of funding for these projects. It would be greatly, greatly appreciated. The repairs, it could include cement, it could be brick, dirt, um, as well as, um, staff time. What we're looking for is, is stabilization of the monument. It's estimated $1,000 per, per monument to stabilize those ones that are on the, on the foundations that, and then the monument itself is tilting. The estimate for the four borders, um, that they're really in danger of, of falling over, we're estimating those, um, at 4,000 total. So again, 1,000 per, um, headstone repairs. The average headstone repair is $500. Depends, of course, on the damage, the, the, the damage that actually exists on that headstone as to how much it really is, but the average is 5,000. So our request from the city council is 10,000, um, to the cemetery for repairs of headstones or of, of walls that need to be maintained or, or strengthened. And then the last thing we have is tours. Um, the volunteers, as I said, we're at the cemetery Mondays and Thursday mornings, and we welcome any council member that wants to come out for a tour. Um, we would love to have you out there. We would love to show you what we do. And then on the next slide, we do have a, a picture of one of our repairs that was done in the past. This was on the Matheson Crypt. On the upper left, what you see is what was on the inside of the crypt. You'll see that the shutter was in several pieces. It had spent many years after being taken out of the crypt on a pallet out on the cemetery before it was taken by Rukula. It was pieced together. You'll see that in the upper, um, right corner. You'll see the repaired shutter in the, in the lower left corner. And then the lower right corner just shows the Matheson Crypt itself. So when you're out in the cemetery, it's actually quite impressive to see this because you can see the size of what we're talking about. And then our very last slide is just a picture of, um, almost all of our Cemetery Commission members. And we just want to thank you for your time and, um, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Pike. That was actually quite informative. I'm assuming we have a budget that we use annually at this point, and I'm not sure where we're at with it right now.
Yes, so, uh, much of the $50,000 that was mentioned in there is, is really just absorbed in our parks budget. But we intended, uh, this year specifically, this coming year specifically, to, uh, increase that funding to fund those items that, uh, were, were discussed. And my recommendation is to, to, on an ongoing basis, fund headstone repairs. To, basically, they're able to do about 10 per year with 5,000, 5,500 bucks. But double that and put in, uh, 10,000 or 5,000 from the city to allow them to get more done in a shorter period of time. So, um, we intend to budget that in the, uh, coming budget. And, uh, allow them to get more work completed.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Good, sure. The coming budget we're discussing is that correct?
Uh, I'm talking about, uh, next year's budget, but we do have, uh, mid-year coming up in a couple more items.
Awesome, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move the community and consent calendar. Uh, individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or on matters not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes. If you'd like to comment and you are attending this meeting in person, please complete a speaker's card and return that to the city clerk. When called upon, please go to the podium to address the council. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to speak, please raise your hand via Zoom. When you are called on by the city clerk, you will be unmuted and you can address the city council. Whether you are here in person or attending in Zoom, when called upon, please give your name clearly and for the audio, audio recording. You are requested to address your comments to the mayor and council and not to the audience. By state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation that you'd like to be distributed to the council, please mail it to the city clerk at 526 C Street, Marysville. Do we have any members of the public wishing to comment tonight?
We do not, Vice Mayor.
Okay, um, we will then move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent agenda are considered routine and are therefore approved by one motion unless a council member or the city manager first requests that a matter be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. What is the will of the council?
Make a motion to approve.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved with a vote of 4-0. Thank you, everyone. Uh, let's see, we have gone through that. Discussion and action calendar. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Members of the public may request to speak on any of these items for up to three minutes when the Marysville call, when the mayor calls for public comment. If you would like to comment and you are attending this meeting in person, please complete a speaker's card, return to the city clerk. When called upon, please go to the podium to address the council. If you are participating via Zoom and would like to speak, please raise your hand via Zoom. When you are called on by the city clerk, you will be unmuted and you can address the city council. Whether you are here in person or attending via Zoom, when called upon, please give your name clearly for audio recording. If you have any documentation that you would like to distribute to the council, please mail to the city clerk at 526 C Street. Okay, where are we at first here? Number seven there, Nicole. Okay, number seven. Contract with Richard and Company, LLP for physical year 23, 25. Audit services. Recommendation, authorize the city manager or designate to execute a three-year contract with Richardson and Company. LLP for audit services covering physical years 22, 23, 23, 24 and 24, 25 with options to extend for two additional years. And second, pass resolution, 2023, approving the audit services in terms conditions. For this, our contact is Jennifer Zinsinski. Go ahead.
So, good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. Um, I'm here to present for the contract for Richardson and Company for audit services. So as you all know, local governments are required to have annual audited financial, financial statements for all transactions in accordance with generally accepted county, government accounting forms, as we call GASP. The audited financial statements are prepared to communicate the overall financial health of the city to those in charge with governance, state and federal oversight agencies, investors and the general public. So Marysville has been using the same auditing firm for the past five years per the current contract that we are in. So it is, it is best practice to go out every five years for requests for proposal to gather bids. So the city did this. We put a request out and we did receive, uh, three qualified applicants. Through a ranking process, the top two were interviewed. And then after that point, we did a review of the proposals where there was an interview process and a review with the city manager. And Richardson and Company emerged as a successful firm with a starting fee of $46,000 per year. So its staff's recommendation to accept the contract with Richardson and, and Company for fiscal years 2023 through 2025 with an optional two-year extension. Any questions?
Okay, uh, this item is now open for public comment. Anybody interested? Do we have anybody?
No public speakers, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. We are now closed for that public. Ask councils if, are there any comments or questions for staff, uh, at this time? Nothing? No? Okay. Uh, what is the will of the council on this?
Move to approve.
I'll second that.
First and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, it's 4-0, thank you. This will stay right there. Uh, budget amendments to fiscal year 22, 23, adopt general budget, general fund budget recommendations, pass a motion to amend FY 22, 23, adopted general fund budget with the proposed adjustments to review and expenses as stated below. I have a question, Jennifer, before you go on. Um, on this chart that you um applied us with here, this updated one. Obviously, this first column must be the annual and the second column is the biannual.
Sorry, let me pull it out. So, the first column, the first was the adopted budget and the second column is the amended with any supplemental appropriations. That may have already been passed.
Okay, so when, when we're looking at these percentages, is that percentage?
So, for.
Of, of the updated? Of the updated in percentage to the budgeted or to the half-year?
To the half-year.
Okay. The percentages are to the.
Correct. The percentage is based on actual that has either been brought in or that has been spent um through December thirty-first.
I got you. Okay.
So, again, with everything else, some revenues go up, some revenues go down. So, we've just adjusted accordingly. Um, are there any other questions, though, with the uh requested amounts? It's a. It's a nice little two-page. There was not, there was not a lot in there because we've done um. The majority of changes in the past have always been for labor negotiations, which we did supplemental appropriations with they, when they happened. So, we did not have to bring them back to mid-year.
Any questions, counsel? You want to, then continue, please.
Okay, so on to my eighty-page report. Actually, this should be a fairly uh overview report. Shouldn't be uh two-time consuming on that. So, I do want to say, just going into this, that it, this is prepared on a cash basis. So, what that means is revenue is recognized when it's received and expenses are recognized when payments are made. So, for this first slide, this is just showing the, the general fund overview. So, if you look at the purple lines, the purple is what we actually have, what the budget is, and then the blue is what's been brought in to date. So, this is going over the general fund, which is the primary operational fund of the city. So, the revenue, sorry, the revenue of sixteen point four seven million. Does also include one-time ARPA funds of one point three million and one-time grant revenues this year of one point three million. So, just want to let you know that's two point eight million of one-time revenue coming in and thirteen point four nine million of ongoing revenue. So, as right now, we have received, um, s- sorry, we have received um seven point zero three percent of our revenue. The majority of that, that has come in is the ARPA funds of the one point five has already been received in this current fiscal year. So, right now, we're around forty-two point seven percent. One of the main reasons why we're not at fifty percent at this point is when it comes especially to sales tax, which I'll discuss more on the next slide. Is it's only four months of sales tax that have come in. Because our payments that come in in July and August are technically from May and June, and we have to accrue back during the audit period. So, we're on a modified accrual when it comes to the audit, therefore, those go back. Um, this is consistent and expected with where we would expect to be at this point of the year. So, the expenses right now are budgeted at seventeen point oh one uh million. That does include the supplemental appropriations that council has already approved prior. Um, in that amount includes one point nine five million of ARPA spending that was approved. And one point nine seven of million of one-time expenses and um grants that were approved. So, our actual expenditures for the year currently is six point four four. So, we've spent around thirty-eight percent. Another reason why that is a little bit on what, um, under a fifty percent mark is at this point, we're still, a lot of our projects are grants. Which in general normally has a two-to-five-month lag time on reimbursements and expending them like the general plan. And a lot of the ARPA funds that we have set aside right now, the projects are still working on being completed. Or the eight hundred thousand dollars for the encryption um was after, that's in the approved budget, it was after the December thirty-first. So, that's why it looks like we're, we're in line with our, our expenses, but a lot of our expenses are going to come actually in the second half of the year. So, our original, as I said, our original budget was a deficit of uh fifty thousand eight seventy-seven and our per, uh revised will be. Two hundred and twenty-three, nine oh nine. Okay, so next slide. So, the next one is I just wanted to go through our top general fund, um, our revenue sources. And again, these are actual during budgets. So, the first one we have is our cannabis tax. Then we have sales tax, was a combination of regular sales tax and measure C. And then we also have our property taxes. So, this um, these three revenue sources account for approximately sixty-seven and a half percent of our ongoing general fund revenue that comes in. So, property taxes, we are actually a little bit above on that. Um, normally, our first payment comes in December and then our second payment should come in May slash June timeframe. Right now, we've actually received um updated results from the county that they believe it's going to be higher than what we originally budgeted, which was included. So, property taxes are right on the mark. Sales tax, again, it's only showing four months. So, and talking with HDL, who's who we work with for sales tax consulting and forecasting. We are still on target and actually expected to receive more than what we originally budgeted, which is why we also have the budget adjustment. When we look at sales taxing quarters, the first four months is the third quarter, which is normally one of the lowest um. If we look at sales tax, third is low, fourth goes higher, first quarter goes, and then second goes, goes higher. So, it looks. If you look at this, it looks like it's behind, but the reality is it's our slowest quarter and it's only four of the months. And then with cannabis, we are only at thirty-five point two, which is for five months because our first month in July had to go back to the month of June. And evaluating this and talking with HDL, we have discovered that overall this revenue source has leveled out and is actually decreased slightly. So, that's why we were asking for a decrease in that overall budget. So, that is ba- those are our overall top um budget generators for the city. Next slide.
Excuse me, Jennifer. We're not that far off though on the cannabis base on that. That's like thirty-something percent. And that was five months?
It's thirty-two point five percent.
That, that was at thirty-two point five?
Correct. So, we're looking at it being about a hundred and forty thousand dollars less than original projections for the year. So, instead of nine hundred thousand, around seven hundred and sixty thousand.
Okay.
Um, we just received our last month because we do receive it on a monthly basis. And it was, it was actually ticked up a little bit. So, it, we may uh project a little bit higher, but we went off of a twenty-month his, twenty-four-ish month history to see where we leveled out. There's a chance it could come in greater, but history is, is, is showing a slowdown in the revenue source.
But also for next budget, are, will we be looking at any of the other cannabis services? That we approved, the manufacturing, the, the distribution?
Uh, yes, we will, but eh, we put in the budget if we actually know that the revenue source will be coming in. If it's still tentative that when we do the financial forecast, we plan on only putting in ongoing revenues that we know of and then putting in scenarios. That if those revenue sources come into play and what they would be, how it would force ca- forecast out. So, there is, there is plans to.
Okay, so we'll see that.
Correct. Because we don't want to put it in the budget and then come back to you mid-year and say, oh, well, this actually didn't happen. Um. I know that uh used to happen four or five years ago and we, we don't want that to happen again.
We're a little early on that. Um. Uh, business hasn't made as much progress as we had thought. Uh, at this point in time, so we'll be tracking it for the rest of this fiscal year to see if we shouldn't. Plug something in and what we would plug in for that business.
It is not moving as we expected?
It's not moving as fast as we.
As we expected. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so, and then these are just by department, just to kind of hit the ones that have the largest budgets and give you an overall. So, overall, all of our operating costs are within our budgetary um expectations. Um, some departments that are not listed here are actually over their fifty percent mark at this time, which is in the, in the charts that you would see within the financial report. And that's due because like one-time payments are paid at the beginning of a quarter, or sorry, beginning of a half a year. But these were like, are, are, these are our largest departments, so I want to do a quick review. Uh, police and fire are tracking at forty-three point seven and forty-four percent respectively. Um, so again, tracking very close to where they should be in their own budget. I do want to say that they also look like they're tracking a little bit smaller because through um December thirty-first, it's only five months worth of payroll. So, it's another one of those, we pay in July, but I have to move it back to the month of June during the audit period. So, it looks like it's a, it's a little bit behind just due to salaries. But if we do the forecasting all the way through the year, both of those departments are, are staying on track within salaries and expenditures. Which is a few uh minor adjustments that were listed in um the attachment. Um, in non-departmental, they're at twenty-one point eight percent. So, I just want to say that seventy-seven percent of this budget is for inter-fund transfers to um capital projects. And these were things like the general plan, Gavin Park, digital encryption, the engineering for the twenty-second street and deferred maintenance. So, we do the transfers once the expenses are done. So, that's why it's showing that there hasn't been the transfers. And then since these are capital projects, whatever we don't spend in this year. Will be reabsorbed in the budget and then we'll bring it forth in next year's budget to be able to complete the project. So, that's why there's such the gap in there. And then in HR, we're at around thirty-six point six um percent. Is because our um UAL payment for the pension obligation bond for unfunded liability, that payment is due in the second half of the year. So, once that payment is made, then that goes right back on target, but it's the principal payment of. I think it's four hundred and eighty-five thousand this year will come out and Jim. And then.
Excuse me, let me just ask you on that. Is that, that's include our payment? And what currently will be due?
Correct, that is.
That includes both?
That it does include both.
Okay, thank you.
So, what we do with the current, which I, this year, I think was, I don't remember the exact amount. I'm going to say forty, fifty thousand dollars this year in accrued is we pay at the beginning of the year. They actually give us a three or four percent credit. So, because the amount is small, we don't make monthly payments anymore. We pay it right when it's due.
So, it's been paid or you're saying at the beginning of the, of the fiscal year?
The current liability has been paid for this fiscal year and then we have the, the, the pension obligation bond.
Okay, thank you.
So, as it's reflected in the budget, we're only asking for forty-four thousand dollars, which just shows right there that we are on, on. Track and on task with the expenses that are being bought forth. Okay, so next, we're just going to do a very, very quick overview on the next slide. Um, just to kind of quickly touch on the gas tax fund and the enterprise fund is those are other major funds within the city. So, this is just an overall chart that shows you what your budget is and then your year-to-date. So, I do have to say on the highway user tax, it says we're at forty um, about forty-two percent. It's also one month behind, but those numbers come directly from the state on a yearly, on a yearly basis. So, we know exactly what that number is going to be. So, there's not going to be any changes. And it's the same thing with our MRA, which is the SB one funds, is there's only four months in there because the other two months were accrued. So, those ones are completely on track. Um, I do want to say that there's a little bit of a salary savings. Because there were some vacancies in the beginning of the year that those have been filled, so we back on track with that. Service and supplies always tends to be a little bit behind at this point because we tend to do a lot of our projects more in the springtime. So, we make sure that there's funding throughout the year for any emergencies that may come up. And then when spring hits, that gives us the opportunity to uh sidewalk repair, um, potholes, trees, whatever it needs to have. And that way, there's money in there. And then the other one, it looks, it always looks a little bit different, is on the net transfers. I do have to say that um, it's because we're still, the transfers was to transfer funds out of the street fund into the capital fund. To finish the fifth street project for construction management and the contingency amount. So, when that project is finished up in the next few months and uh all the budgets finished, then that amount will be transferred over. And then you won't have the uh discrepancy in the net transfers right now. So, that is just to finish up fifth street. And then this year, just want to remind you that the current debt, if you look at it, the revenues versus the expenses uh for the budget, there was a. A deficit that was approved, but that was because again, we're transferring funds from the street fund to capital to finish the fifth street project. So, that was coming out of our uh fund balance and what was in SB one funding. So, gas tack is on, or gas tax fund is on track. And so, next we'll go to the enterprise fund, which is also known as our wastewater fund. So, when we're looking at uh sewer service fees, we are at fifty-three percent. The one thing I do want to point out is this is only five months worth of revenue because again, July is moved back. So, this just shows that the uh new system that the council has put in place in the past few years to actually transfer balances. From uh renters into owners is working. We're getting more and more collections. The other part that I do want to state with this is, uh, this hasn't actually shown the full picture of how well that is doing. Because this year, if they haven't paid, we're going to put them all into uh property tax liens for the owners. And we will see that in the next year as property tax is coming in. So, this is a long process as we're starting to actually um, starting to get the money back in sewer revenues that we were not in the past. So, it is tracking higher than we were originally expecting. So, overall, our operating expenses are at forty-five point six percent.
On five months?
Oh, sorry, on the expenses.
Oh, is that on five months too, though, or is that? The expenses are the full six months?
So, it's a full six months except for salaries and benefits.
Okay.
Um, salaries and benefits is always the one for every across the board that is always a five months. The one I do want to point out is if we look under services and supplies, we've only spent around nineteen percent of that. So, included in that amount is the bill that we get from Linda County, Linda County Water District for our connection service with them. They just finished up their audit, which is how we base, we base our current fee based on their last audit um per the contract we just renegotiated with them. They just got that finished and we had a meeting, the city manager and I last week to discuss that bill. So, an invoice is coming. At any time, but it does not include any, that's why it's, it's only at nineteen percent because we have not received a bill yet with Linda County, but that is coming. It's just, it's a large amount seen in a budget with very little activities. I wanted to point that out for you. So, with that, that's the overview of our enterprise fund. And with that, um, I'm open to any questions that you or the public may have.
Anybody have any questions? I, the only one I have is, is since you've seen the. Or are expecting the invoice for the Linda connection, is it within line where we were expecting?
Yes.
Not, not way better, not way worse, in line with where?
It's in line. It, it may be, since we don't have a exact amount, it may be with like within five percent over. Of maybe within five percent of over what was expected because they did have some one-time costs that we've talked to them about. But no, it's, it's not going to be a large swing one way or the other.
Okay, great. Great.
That is, that is why we had the meeting with uh the general manager.
Jennifer, can we review real quick?
Oh, yes.
Be awesome if uh the cemetery folks or one or two of you to stay for a few minutes. Just for a few minutes, please. Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions for Jennifer?
I do, just in general, are, are, are you pleased with this budget? Are you happy with it?
Oh, I, yes.
Good. I, 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 I want you to be hap- yeah, I want you to be happy, but this is a re- really great work. I commend you. Um, and thank you for bringing up the cannabis. Um, I'm going to say discrepancy or shortfall. What have you, which is, you've researched this and it's in general all around the board. It's everywhere. This is not just an issue that's affecting the city of Marysville, but the cannabis industry and the state of California in general. Perfect. Thank you.
It, is there any um, understanding even throughout the state why that is?
So, again, we worked with uh, we worked with HDL to have this conversation. And what is being seen across the state is because more and more regulations are coming into place. And um, there's so many taxes or fees being associated with it that the other market. Is actually people are going back to that because.
Way to put it, the other market.
Because of pricing differences. So, when you have an industry that almost um, who is very well regulated.
Yeah.
Sometimes it'll push customers to a different avenue.
I think we were all expecting that to come. It was just a matter of when. So, okay, any more questions?
Thank you.
Jim, any comment you wanted to make?
Think uh Stuart or, or council member Gilchrist asked. Think Stuart or Councilmember Gilchrist asked Jennifer. For how comfortable she was with the budget. Um, I'm fairly comfortable with the budget as well, or our actual performance relative to the budget. Um, our revenues have been tracking fairly on track, uh, so we haven't seen. Uh, uh, the signs of a recession yet, other than it what appears to be a shift in the cannabis product. Um, so at this point in time, uh, with all the one-time funding that was received, we're in pretty good shape.
Great.
To the chair.
Yes, yes.
And Mr. Shad, you should be, um, th- thank you, this is great that you are. As um confident with this as you are, you've done an outstanding job. It's your team that's done this.
Okay, um, I think that's it.
Chair, oh, one more here.
So, I mean, thank you for a minute. With that being said, and the conversations we're having about the mid-year budget and so forth. I I'd like to uh make a motion, if possible, on the floor, that we do um. Uh, mid-year budgetary adjustment to give five thousand dollars more to the cemetery. Commission to be able to take care of their headstones and so forth with the potential furniture adjustment in the fiscal year end.
And I'd like to second that, oh, very.
Okay, I I understand you're you're asking to to do the adjustment within the twenty-two, twenty-three year. And to add the five thousand. Can we do that at this point here tonight? We can, and we can take the motion by Councilman Hudson. Second by Councilman Gilchrist, yes, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? No.
No.
For all.
I'm sure that would be a free letter.
Thank you.
Counsel.
Okay. Uh, before we move on to committee reports, um, I'm going to assume something came up there that I'm missing with the cemetery, or was it just this you wanted them to hear? There you go. Okay, I didn't know if there was anything beyond that, so there you go, you're going to get your five thousand, five thousand dollars this year.
This year.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh, committee reports, where do you want to start, Dom? You want to start with you?
I don't have any committee, many items to report, I don't think.
Okay. Mister Hudson, anything?
Uh, so no real committee reports to talk about, um. Well, if we did real quick, we did talk about some potential adjustments coming up with the Yuba Center Transit Board with some uh. Temporary relocation of some buses throughout the Yuba County area coming up in the next few months, while Caltrans moves forward with their. Highway seventy project, um, on from that, nothing to talk about with LAFCO. Wait, next one will be on council comments, because it's not really the committee, so that's all, thank you.
Okay, uh, just to add to that quickly was I was surprised that it looks like we are going to be. Leasing out some of our oldest non-used buses for the Yuba Center Transit. Which was a pleasant surprise of revenues for there, so I guess they're sitting collecting dust now. Um, Councilman Gilchrist, any committee reports?
I have no committee reports at this time.
Okay, um, city clerk, council correspondence, anything?
None for this meeting, Vice Mayor.
Great, thank you. Um, Mr. City Manager, it's all yours.
Uh, few things. First of all, um, last council meeting, we uh made an award. Uh, to complete the construction of the concrete retaining wall for Bryant Field. Uh, they are out there and pouring concrete at this point in time, so. It looks like we're going to be ready for the season if all continues at the pace it's going. Um, we do have a Drake's uh meet the manager meeting, uh, Mr. Flores, that is Thursday at six o'clock.
That's correct, Thursday at six o'clock at Stassi's Fourth Ward. And it's a meet and greet for the team manager, Bill Rogan, who will be coming to town along with the team ownership, uh, Andrew Dunn. Be great if all of the, all of us can make it.
I think I'll be there.
We, we also have a planning commission meeting uh coming up tomorrow. Uh, where we'll be at minimum talking about uh the general plan and the process. Is that correct, uh, Mr. Flores?
That's correct, yes.
Um, and then, of course, we have the Baka festivities starting Friday evening. And going through Sunday, uh, I, there are several events going on, uh, but the parade. I believe is Saturday at two?
Eleven, it's uh, the parade's at eleven o'clock on Saturday, it starts, kicks off Friday night with a cruise. Which we haven't had in Marysville in a really long time, and then carries into Saturday with the parade, and then Sunday, bomb day festivities. And a rib cook-off that Mr. or Councilman Hudson is going to be leading.
Got some comments on there.
Um, we are uh working on uh performance measures, uh, and will likely be talking with council members. Uh, individually on that, just uh, uh, so we can report quarterly how. The city operation is doing, which was a commitment we made in the strategic planning process. Um, and then an update on the B Street property, uh, the uh. Developer has made their deposit and is in their due diligence period at this point, so that's moving right along. Um, what, what was on consent item uh that wasn't uh pulled? Uh, we, we are receiving a little over three hundred thousand dollars in Measure K money. Through D ten Hallwood uh district to fund some uh capital improvements and equipment within the fire department, uh, so. That's off to uh Chief Hegstrom, and I think Andrew played a big role in that as well. Um, yeah.
Like.
Excuse me, um, was that something unexpected? Or was that, that's an annual?
This, this was a balance that has built up because of the litigation on the Measure K lawsuit. And so I don't, I wouldn't expect that much every year, uh, but we knew uh the district was going to have a pretty good size. Chunk of money to spend, and they were very gracious about uh providing that for both the building uh. To supplement the cost of the annex building we've been discussing, as well as a a new vehicle for uh pulling. The uh kids here and and doing inspections, I think that will be uh our inspector's vehicle. Uh, and as dual role vehicle, inspector's vehicle, as well as be able to pull the excavator. So, um. I, and I will say mid-year, just. I I want to thank the team, our staff, um, the reason our mid-year is. Uh, in such good shape is they have been very uh good about how, not only how they spend money, but. Finding additional revenue streams, and it seems like every day they come up with a new uh amount. Um, to to help us offset some of our costs, so very happy with that.
Okay, um, we are too. Council comments and seeing as how you had one, Mister Hudson, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so uh, the only comment I really got is I do appreciate the update. Jennifer, on the budget and so forth, it's it's good to look at. I got some other questions, I'll be talking to you and him later, kind of going from there, um. Being said, uh, last but not least, I just want to say that um I've been helping out uh the Baka Parade Committee with. Uh, let's just say the Chinese community, because I've had some, just trying to figure out who's doing what for the Baka Parade. And I was going to uh, we were trying to do a rib eating contest for Sunday morning, and due to just some logistical issues. We've decided not to have it this year, so just because of the fact that um, and that 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 just came to head like twenty minutes before closed session this morning, so today, so. Um, just a bunch of information, it was uh, I tried my best not to really step on any toes and just to be a supportive figure and and take care of that little function for them. And not really take the reins, because it's the Baka event, I I just want to help as a person with Baka event, and uh. Maybe I should have done a little more, maybe not. I'll take some ownership in the fact that it's not going to happen, but it's not going to happen this year, the rib eating contest, but the car show will still go on Sunday morning. Uh, there will still be some other Sunday afternoon activities before bomb day, and uh. It was just a logistical aspect with county health and so forth, with exactly what they required and too many chefs in the kitchen. There would be, that's my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Velza, comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank you, Jennifer, for putting together the presentation, and you're doing a stellar job, and. Marysville just keeps winning, and it's good to win, it feels good to win, so this report was a winning report today, and Chief, and. Sacks, good job with, with your guys, as it seems to be morale is up, and you're looking good, we've got new recruits, and it's been a challenge. And so, um, good job, and good job to all staff, I know everybody's contributing every, you know, a a lot, are the best that they can do, so we've got a good A-team on the field here.
On that note, uh. Uh, approved in the budget was radar units uh for more traffic enforcement. Uh, so that's both uh a positive and could be a negative if uh you're speeding through town, so. So be aware of that, those will be out there soon.
I love it.
It'll only be a negative for a while, everybody will slow down.
Uh, last thing I would say is, um, last week, we uh had a our monthly. Say love strategy meeting, and um this upcoming Saturday in cooperation with the Baka. Say love is going to be downtown and and in the morning trying to help to get things ready before the parade. Kind of coinciding with Public Works, but just, you know, lending a helping hand where needed and uh finding finding cleanup areas, et cetera, so. Um, and I think after the parade, there's an effort uh for volunteers to stick around afterwards to help do a full street sweep. Behind the parade, I know Recology sends a sweep truck, but additional hands to help do a cleanup after things are finished, so.
Is that after parade or after bomb day?
Uh, well, after parade, because it's on Saturday.
Okay.
Just checking Bombay's jest is um colorful.
Yeah. Um, that's all I have for today, and and deep condolence condolences to the Branson family.
Mister Gilchrist.
Uh, no council comments at this time, other than everyone's doing a fantastic job. Thank you, guys.
Uh, just quickly, um, Jennifer, great job, all the staff, I'm sure that helped you do it, um, I know. We say that every time, but it's especially nice when we get a lot of nice news out of it, too. And uh, Chief, congratulations with some new guys there. Let's just hold on to.
Yeah, so to the chair, Mayor, can I just add one thing, and I and I totally messed it, and I'm glad. Um, that was picked up by Dom here, I just wanted to say, Chief Sacks, and especially about um Officer Quinnes, I mean, I I've been here in this city for a very long time, and. Him and I got here about the same time, and so I'd had no idea he was retiring, it was like a little heartstring right there, and I just want to say uh thank you. I think he got more awards than I got um at playing high school football tonight, right, so. He walked out with a lot, and I think that was awesome, and it was, it was a great send-off for a true. Individual that was dedicated to the city of Marysville, even though he didn't really live here, so um, thank you for putting that on, that was a good, good show, and I'm. I'm excited about the motion, and I'm excited about the new officers, so I just, I really felt the need added about Officer Quinnes, so thank you very much, appreciate that.
Um, everybody, Jim, great job, obviously, if the report's good, that means you're doing something right, too, so we appreciate that. Um, everyone on the staff, uh, and I just want to finish with saying I spoke with the mayor this morning. And uh, very heart-wrenching, um, I know we want to all respect his privacy, but I I I do know that. Uh, a little discussion with him was comforting, so uh to hi- all his family, um, prayers go out for them, so our next meeting.
Hey, to the chair, one last thing, since everybody's going around giving a bunch of atta boys, I'd like to acknowledge Brant and say, Brant, you're doing a great job, so I'd say. I mean, we're all included, we can do that, in fact. We're B Street property.
Okay, our next meeting, regular meeting, will be Tuesday, March seventh at six P M, meeting is adjourned.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake. Where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking. Moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.